Okay. It is nine o'clock on May 27, 2017, and I follow Potter County Commissioner for Torrey. They have Matt Martin, South Georgia Baptist Church, who will do our invocation. Just as a matter of record, so you know, Judge Esteban has been passed away Friday night. So please keep him in communion prayers. Mr. Martin, if you would come forward, please, while standing, or may I be called?
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the beauty of the day. Father, we have so many things to be grateful for. We are grateful for this, a free nation where we can determine the direction that we, as people, go. We're grateful, Father, for these people that have been elected to serve us and for their diligence and faithfulness to do so. I pray for them today, Father, I pray for wisdom, I pray for courage, I pray that they would find unity in the right things. Today we thank you most of all for Jesus, and it is in his name we pray.
In the name of the United States of America, and in the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Along with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Number one on the agenda is recognition of minutes from May 8, 2017, Potter County, which is holding a ceremony. If you need those, or changes, if not, they're still recognized. And two vouchers to consider an act upon approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office for the period of May 3, 2017 through May 17, 2017. Check numbers, 174-795 through 175-031, and wire transfers number 901 through 906, and the amount of $2,938,407 to be exchanged.
Will we approve vouchers as presented?
Wait, just a second, Judge, I have a question. Carrie, page seven of thirty, check number 174-877, AP Technology, 1,225, just the annual maintenance, I'm just wondering what that was?
This is our check, right?
Judge, this is okay, okay, thank you.
A motion, second, all favoriters, right here. Number three, to collections, to recognize that Laura Prado, Director of collections for Potter County, received the Benny Sermons Award at a conference in San Antonio, May 8. Now, Laura, Laura did not get to go to this. Whatever employees went, brought this award back to her, and the award is for individuals or programs selected for finding a way to succeed in spite of seemingly insurmountable obstacles and challenges, inviting the spirit to never give up. I would ask for an explanation, but just congratulations is all I'm gonna say. So would you come up and get this award, please, ma'am? Pretty nice.
Yep.
Very good. I'm sure there's more to it, I'll hear it somewhere.
Judge, one thing I did ask Laura is if she would give the logo to our IT department to get that on our webpage. Anytime we get an award out, that's one of the things I always want.
Good idea. Number four, insurance report, or a few times insurance report. Kay, do you want to stand there and do it, or you want to come up?
Sure.
It's up to you.
Good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna stay down here.
You brought your ass down with us.
There's nothing unusual on the insurance report. We are experiencing higher claims than we have in the past. We've talked about at previous courts, the expectation of some of the higher claims, and we are beginning to see some of that coming.
Okay, and while you're standing, number five, this is for time, do your reporting, this is for time, taking the actions necessary.
It is time to do our quarterly comp time report, and you'll notice that this, on this comp time report, there was, we were down to just one employee that was over the maximum threshold. And actually, between the time that the report triggered as of April 30th and before the today's court, that number was down even further. So this one employee is down to just a few hours over the threshold. We have made great strides in getting those hours down. The previous reports have been as much as nine over and ranged as well as five over, and so this is the lowest yet.
Good, okay. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. So no action taken on that. Number six, treasures report.
Okay, so I just kind of wanted to just mention with the monthly treasures report that that's a snapshot picture of April 30th. So all of those totals are reconciled totals, it's the balances at the end of that particular time frame. So this morning, and this is just our general fund cash available at A and B, we're earning 1.09. And usually, I have a report by this morning because that changes every Monday, but Derek James, our officer, is on travel this week, and so the other person may be slower getting it too. But as of, as far as I know, it's 1.09, it hasn't changed today. So in the checking account, we have $20,906,628.068. In our Texas class, which is 1.09, is $8,612,267.89. In tax pull prime is 1.707, $5,56,129.82. In tax pull, earning 71 basis points, $40894.59. So our grand total of just general cash fund is $34,975,923.98.
So how does that compare to even the time last month, the market? Are we staying flat, or are we progressing?
You know, it's kind of been a little flexing back and forth, but only by basis points or so. So basically, it's been really slow.
So still recognized, number seven, Potter County Investment Policies, to consider an act upon renewing Potter County Investment Policy and list of authorized approvals for 2017.
So there is a Housefield, Housefield 2928, that is still out there, there hasn't been any activity on it, and we're not sure how it's gonna come out. It has to do with the home loan rates, but it may change the coverage in our investment policy. So who knows, you know, what's gonna happen with that, and since our investment policy was expiring this month, I'd like to go ahead and renew, remove the policy as is, and then if this does pass and there doesn't need to be a change, then I'll just do an amendment to it. Because it probably won't be effective until September 1st, but who knows? So I just want to give you a heads up, that is out there, we may need to do an amendment, but at this time, there's not any changes. And so I'm asking for you to approve the investment policy with the investment brokers. Yes, I'm asking that we add a person, it's on the very last part of your report. It's Fernando Coletto, I think that's how you pronounce his name, with MultiBank Securities. And just to give us other options in the event we do decide to, we need a broker. He did send in his due diligence, and so if you have anyone who would like to, you know, see that, go through that, or anything else, I'm just letting that one. And I will get you that.
Where is he at?
He is at Austin.
Please, who sits on the committee, can we remove the investment committee?
Yes, it is R. Kelly, and Carrie Hood, and Tad Fowler.
I make a motion that we approve the investment policy as presented with the addition of authorized brokers, MultiBank Securities, Fernando Coletto.
Motion, second, all favoriters, right here.
Oh, a question for Carrie. Over the years, we've talked about a debt policy, I may not be calling it the right name. Well, do we expect to see something like that before this budget cycle? I know there's been drafts.
I have a debt policy ready to go, but it's recommended that you have a long-term capital projects plan.
Okay.
To go along with your debt policy, and we do not have that.
Okay, so as we start the initiative with PRPC and that plan, that will be good to align the two together? Okay, all right, thank you.
Then I'm happy to have a copy of the draft of the debt management policy, if anyone is interested in that.
I bet if we could send that to Kyle at PRPC, who's helping to lead that effort, that may be good for him to have just in the background.
Okay, you have a proposed interlokal agreement, to consider an act upon proposal for interlokal cost sharing agreement with CSCD for multi-department internet firewall protection. Is Jason here, CSCD, anybody? No one? I didn't come back, I don't know. Carrie, you want to explain that, you can explain it to me earlier. Put you on the spot a little bit.
It's, most of y'all know, the CSCD network, the CSD, there's a certain rule in our district judge, I think, that they are willing to purchase a new firewall, but they do not have state funds to also make the magnets, and they can access really to magnets, it's the service of our employees. So to even monitor, if I'm anything like this before, this weekend, it would probably be best to get it to work to see what they do there.
Judge, does anyone discern, a lot of times what happens because of the CSCD IT department, I'll just call it that, in our IT department, there's duplication of services. I don't know if anyone has looked at our firewall system and whether that can be used, but certainly for me to discern, I'd like to see probably the interlokal before we take action.
I would too, and just to say this, I do know that CSCD's program and our program does not interact with each other, I mean, they don't do that, I mean.
They actually, they actually use our internet connection, but we have firewall, our separate firewalls to keep our networks separate. So we actually have a firewall on our end, and they have their own firewall on their end, so.
But Judge, I'll add, over the years, I've learned it is not because the technology can't handle it, a lot of times, it's wanting to keep the departments separate. So we're at a point where it's starting to cost funds, and it's moving in that lane, that may be worth a bigger dialogue. How do we use the technology that we have countywide to help be good stewards of the dollar?
Tad, what do you, what are your proposals on this? Do you have one?
Not really. I expected Jason to hear you explain. I have a very fundamental understanding, I think the cost he was talking about was about $3,600 over five years. And I understood there was also some implications for the district judges, or all the judges perhaps. That somehow this would speed up their operations. There is some frustration with the judges, helping to wait, their systems to process, whatever it is to process.
So. I tell you what, why don't we pass this until we actually give the explanation from Jason, and also give a copy of the proposed interlokal agreement?
And maybe discern if we can use our technology already.
Okay, number nine, job posting for IT department, to consider an act upon protocol for job posting of applicants for positioning personal technology director. This was just on there because I'm assuming we're just gonna go forward with, to take applications, just like for any other job, I'm assuming? Kay, Zed?
Last time when we recruited for this position, we did post the position along normal guidelines, and then we reached out to a few extra outlets. A committee was formed to review the applications, and I believe that at the end of the day, the committee interviewed the top four, the entire court interviewed the top two, or met with the top two before a final decision made. And, you know, that's the process that we followed last time we did advertise, and well, New Year's, we went to Auster Avenue, I believe, or the avenues that we used last time.
Okay, y'all have any thoughts on that?
I do have, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask, who proposed that committee?
Last time, we had Commissioner Murgia, Commissioner Kelly, Carrie, myself, and Wade Overstreet. We also involved an IT selection consultant from the outside to sit in on all those interviews and help with that swing process.
I assume that's gonna change somewhat because you actually.
I would like to be, yeah, I would like to be on the committee.
And I, I don't see executive session for us to dialogue, I have not heard anything about the position other than our last action of suspending with pay. So I think as a court, whether that's informing publicly or executive session, I'm not sure the right word, but to make sure we're informed about the position, right? We haven't taken formal action on that position other than a suspension, unless I missed that a lot. Okay, okay, okay.
It's like permitting.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I think of updating on that, and I can visit directly on that, Judge.
Okay, so let's just go ahead with the usual protocol then, to post.
I will pull the last posting, and I would assume that the, well, we would need to establish a committee to review that posting. If we're adding you, Judge Tanner, to the committee, then as I understand it, we'll need to then review one of the other two commissioners in order to.
All of them, so.
You go ahead.
I can, I can step back.
I always wanted to say that. You're removed. Then y'all, y'all figure that out, whatever. Okay, Kay, go get that ready, go look at it, get it done, this, this, this pretty quick if I can.
I'll get that posting out to the committee as it exists at the end of the court today, by December 21st.
Judge, the only addition I might add to that list, do you think it would be helpful to have a representative of the IT department, maybe Brandon, or? I'm just, I'm anticipating potential questions that might be asked of the interviewee, and they're maybe very technical questions about our infrastructure and the type of things we use. It would be nice to be able to have someone that could kind of talk the talk, if you will, and make sure that the candidates know of what our, we just put a lot of money into technology. And what I don't want to do is move a direction that we hire a leader that potentially doesn't know of that, can't support it, and I want to speak for you guys in IT, so if I'm out of line, please tell me.
Let me just say this, I'm gonna try to say this without, Brandon is the interim director, and could potentially become the director, so I don't think he should be on the committee.
Okay, okay, so as a candidate, I understand that, as a candidate, I understand that, and so maybe, it may be another network representative or someone, I'm just thinking of.
I think that's a good suggestion, bringing on the expertise in that area, so without any conflict, I think that would be a good move.
I believe Carrie Easterling and CSCD has offered potentially one of their IT people to serve as a consultant, if you will, on that committee, if the court wishes to do that, is that correct?
And that would solve any problem that we do not know?
What we use, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking back to meetings over the years, and I have been in these meetings, and what they use and what we use are not apples to apples, and that's been, and I'm looking to share, right? Can you be honest, Chair? So that's part of what has siloed us, and I'm just, I'm just trying to be proactive and think about, and I don't, I don't have an opinion, we should, we should try and get the round table.
It certainly has been done to utilize, to, specifically, and there, that actually, the protocol, knowledge base, so I don't think that would be out of line.
And I don't think we have to decide that today, Judge, but if you're looking for action, we could just send an IT representative and leave it up to you to discern who that should be, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Okay, that's not what I mean, let's do that. Okay, so do we need to make a motion on this, or do we just need to, yes?
Do we need to define the, the, the?
Maybe we should.
Are you gonna assume that, you have the expertise in that, in that area, we just, we just got, or that?
So I want to make a motion, I'm gonna write down the people. Let's review the people.
So, Kay, would you, would you mind ready to do that list from last time again, I'm sorry, I'm about to take notes in here.
Yes, it was yourself, Commissioner Murgia, and Commissioner Kelly, Carrie Hood, our auditor, Wade Overstreet from the county attorney's office, and Jimmy Newman, who was an IT selection consultant, and myself.
Scott, do you?
Yeah, I think it should be Tad this time, Wade was the silverfish, she had.
Okay, just put Tad in there.
Yeah, it's sure not. Does Tad ever say something? Yes, he's already had this. He said he was happy to do so.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to formulate a committee for the job, the IT director, and that committee to be comprised of Judge Tanner, Commissioner Murgia, Carrie Hood, Tad Fowler, Kay Holland, and an IT representative for the expression and judgment.
Okay, motion, second, all favoriters, right here. Rose Bob Zero, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kay.
Thank you. Number 10, fireworks, to consider an act upon an order prohibited or restricted sale and use of restricted fireworks in advance of July 4th. This is something that we get every year, and I have talked to Richard Lake, and he said we're currently not in a drought condition, but you would let me know as soon as that does happen, so I can, can I just made it where I can just sign an order, correct, Tad?
Yes.
Drought conditions change. So that's, that's in place, so what we need to do today is figure out if we need to go ahead and ban aerial fireworks.
But Judge, I thought there was a law that we could not do that unless the KDEI index. If I remember correctly, this legal jurisdiction is tied to that number, and I could have that incorrect, so I don't want to speak. But I remember one year, we actually approved it, and the index was not correct, and we had to come back and undo that.
Yeah, it is back.
But I could have my sequence out.
I also remember back in the day, we just did this every year, because it's just dangerous.
Well, I would disagree with that, I'm just.
The statute requires drought conditions, and we don't currently have drought conditions, or we take action of authorization in.
Okay, okay.
It occurs, okay.
Maybe the local county's not in drought, and there's portions of our county that are off the off the books. I would move that we authorize prohibiting the sale or use of restricted fireworks based upon the decision of county judge and the drought index to take effect June 15th.
Okay, and a motion, second, all favoriters, right here.
Just, I'm sorry, Judge. Tad, is that motion, since it has an effective date, I just want to make sure.
Well, the effective date is a deadline, if you're going to restrict or prohibit aerial fireworks, it has to be done by June 15th in order to be effective for July.
And I would add to the most subject to the existence of drought conditions at the time of the order, so. Subject to the existence of drought conditions in our area.
If the drought conditions come after July, around June 15th, it's still a little.
June 15th?
Because that's when we start selling. We have to make this before 15th, you have to have sales.
Wait until the last, last day.
So are we adding, just subject to the drought, subject to the existence of not so?
I just did say this one.
What do you think? Okay, and a motion, second, all favoriters, right here. Number 11, normal proposal number 1066-13, we do all, to consider an act upon the, or to post number 1066-23, the contract with current pricing and current family management bank, and return the end of July, post 2017. One we currently have expires June 25th, 2017, and it was signed on 14th, so.
So according to the government code, we can remove this for another two years before going off for a full bid. So I've worked with Tad, and Vicky, and they work with me, and Karen Freeman.
Yeah, I have been pleasantly surprised at how aggressive and competitive they have tried to be this last year in particular, so I think competition is happy.
Do you have a new renewal for me to sign, or is it with you?
Actually, what, Tad, correct me if I'm wrong, we do a formal renewal letter, and so we will be doing that at.
Okay, good.
They will acknowledge that, and that should be sufficient speed.
Yeah, that will be for, for court approvals.
And that could be in your, like, the.
Yes, yes, that's correct, it will be acknowledged that you approved it, so that's the case.
Move that we approve a renewal of 1066-23, the contract with current pricing and returning the family management bank for additional two-year term, beginning July 1, 2017.
Motion, and second, all favoriters, right here.
Thank you, and I wanted to say on the investment policy, you have an order, I think, that.
Thank you.
And number 12, Bureau of Land Management, cross border management area, to hear a report on this proposed recreational area of Potter County, to take action on approval of letter of support for development of this project. Commissioner Church.
We have a opportunity here in Potter County, we have an area that I think is a real jewel that we need to support and try to get developed for everyone to use. Anyway, so we've invited today Adrian Esquio. for, uh, for everyone to use, anyway, so we've invited today Adrian Esquiar, he's a natural resource specialist with Bureau of Land Management, his office is here in, in Amarillo, and he can tell us a little bit more about this crossbar management area.
Uh, Commissioner Church, thank you, Judge, thanks, Commissioner, thanks for having me. Can I ask you some questions?
Thank you.
So, uh, my name's Adrian Esquiar, I manage the crossbar, uh, management area just north of Amarillo, um, we're part of the BLM, uh, we are, uh, if you guys don't know about the BLM, it's not because, very much it's just we don't exist, we don't have a heavy presence in Texas, um, our mission is to sustain the health, diversity, and productivity of our lands for current and future generations, we're a small agency with a big mission, um, and because we don't, this, are you guys able to see these?
Yes.
Um, BLM, we manage over two hundred and sixty million acres throughout the US, and I'm sure you've heard of us, and, um, it's not always positive, but, uh, we're positive here in Amarillo, um, we have the helium plants, uh, that produces most of the world's helium, uh, that, uh, part of the BLM is, uh, projected to shut down in twenty twenty one, but the crossbar is going to stay, uh, this is, it, actually a true graphical representation of the, of the acreage in Texas, we have twelve thousand acres, the crossbar, that's it, that's throughout the whole state, we report to the New Mexico State Office in San Diego, where we manage just over thirteen acres. So, this is a, a map of the crossbar, uh, twelve thousand acres, uh, cliffside helium plant is just south of it, it's about four miles, uh, we're fifteen miles north of downtown Amarillo, so when we're talking about, uh, opportunities for this property, we're extremely close to, to the city, um, we all know Wallo drove Canyon is still further south and, and east, and Lake Meredith is a lot further east, um, so we wanna make as much, uh, as, as much of this property available to the public as we can. So we've got some goals, primarily restoration, I'm not gonna talk about that today because it takes a long time to, 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 education, um, we host a lot of students out there for field trips, it's kinda difficult because we don't have, uh, uh, public access to the property, but we do have administrative work on the access through the south, so we take a bunch of high school field trips out there, and finally, uh, recreation, and we'll talk about education and recreation. So we host these students, we get, uh, representatives for, from various departments, state, federal, nonprofits, to come out and have stations on these field trips throughout the property, and we discuss different things, uh, we do things, uh, like radios, I'm gonna treat you, this, uh, picture was from Cap Rock Canyon, um, when you think about the lack of public land in Texas, it's really evident when you have three hundred students coming to want property or field trip, we had to change the way we structure our field trips because it's hard to handle three hundred students and actually be effective, so we broke it down into three different groups, um, so we brought in Texas Tech to do regular telemetry. Uh, we use the, the corrections officers out there to, uh, help us get inmates in exchange for, for labor, we offer them opportunities to run their, their sense tracking dogs to train them, so we get a lot of work out of them, but we incorporate that into our field trips, so we can just get more diverse, uh, set of skills exposed to the, to the kids that come out, WT comes out, they do their thing with wildlife, we bring archaeologists out here, uh, this is in Adlado, they, they have the most fun doing this, knowing it, uh, the, the crossbar is very rich with cultural artifacts, uh, we discuss what previous civilizations did out there, what we think that they did, uh, the Texas game ordens, this is some of their, the crossbar is one of their favorite properties to overlook the Canadian River and see what's going on down there, and they also bring out their operations, being the, the helium plants, of course, we talk about bradogenics and the helium processes, and then, we talk about, uh, fine, we, the BLM is heavily involved in fire suppression here in Potter County, uh, that's one of our main objectives in the BLM, is fire suppression throughout the country, uh, we work very closely with you, Blake. And we have a cave exhibit, um, they like this, we, we do the cave exhibit, I know we don't have a lot of caves in this area, but we like to expose them to things that exist even outside of Potter County, um, this was a real hit. So, education, we, we, Texas State University, Texas Tech, Texas A&amp;M, uh, West Texas A&amp;M, they bring out research groups, and we research this in our political plan, WT, they, they do most of our research for, uh, all the logical processes in that property. Uh, just more pictures. Um, so, we get to recreation, and as much opportu- opportunities we have out there were, were somewhat limited because we haven't had public access off of Highway two eighty seven, uh, the property is a mile and a half, uh, west of the intersection of the Canadian River and Highway two eighty seven, luckily, we secured a donated easement through private land, and we're in the process of, of finalizing it through the legal system, um, so with this easement, we are looking for a soothing building and public road to open the property for recreation, not only camping and hiking and horseback riding and mountain biking, but also, uh, to continue the research and, and education, uh, we've worked with Texas Tech to develop some sort of stargazing program out there, so Potter County residents don't have to travel all the way to Lake Meredith or, or, or anywhere else, Potter County has a really, really good opportunity here to actually make this land available, instead of seeing residents leave Potter County, they come to Potter County for outdoor recreation So there's a lot of opportunity. Um, our state is growing, there's no doubt about that, uh, the Texas major concern see estimates that the population will increase by eighty-two percent by year twenty sixteen. Uh, and these people are coming in from the east coast, the west coast, a lot from the west coast, or the western US where there's a lot of public land, um, we all know state parks, um, they're readily available, but they're small, and if you wanna enjoy mountains, you're gonna do these amongst a, a lot of active activity for camp, campers, uh, cans, everything else, so, again, this is a, an, a way to make more land available in Potter County, so we gotta think big, um, what we're proposing is we, uh, make this an outdoor recreation, an official special recreation management area, we surveyed and marked over twenty miles of hiking trails, multi-use trails, archaeologists just finished, we're clear, um, obviously, if you don't have money, you can't do anything, so we're waiting for money to actually start the construction, but we've had a lot of support, um, so, uh, you know, the vision, like I said, is to make it a special recreation management area, those are big, those are big time things for the BLM, uh, you know, we manage so much land, we have so much recreation, those special recre- those sermos, SRA's, they, uh, are very coveted by the, by outdoor enthusiasts. So I just wanna show you guys some pictures of what the crossbar looks like, this is what people would see during their camping, uh, nights and days, and during, uh, their trail hiking, uh, bike and horseback riding, we're not gonna be allowing off-road vehicles, they have the river just to the north of us on the other side of the fence, so we're not gonna, not pursuing allowing off, off-road vehicles. So there's more pictures, um, if you guys know the river, you know where that train trestle is, we're just on the west side of that. This is West Amarillo Creek coming into the Canadian River, snowy days, uh, we have a lot of wildlife out there, we got a farm on her, shield deer, white tail deer, um,
plenty of.
Yeah, we got some, uh, yeah, something we'll have to deal with up here, um, but it's, it's a really beautiful property, Commissioner Church, thanks for taking time out to come see it, um. People hunt the crossbar, um, we offer belt running to, on a first come, first served basis, we don't charge for that, and we enter the property into the Texas auto hunt system, or guide. This is probably my favorite picture, at this point here, uh, you're looking south and east, south, southeast, downtown is in the background to the right, um, but on this site, we're gonna have an interpretive center, an interpretive center talking about, oh, we don't know what we're gonna put there yet, but off the trail, we'll get interpretive center, we'll have several throughout the trail system, we don't wanna make trails just for, and trails, we wanna educate people who are out there, and, uh, if, I'm sure most people have figured out to Wallo drove Canyon, it's, while it's great, they're very congested, if you go out on a nice day, uh, you're gonna be waiting forty-five minutes to get in, and as a result, their trails are in spite of it, that's why we're keeping that long, one of the things that our advocate groups have suggested is to, especially mountain bikers, when we can offer difficulty, we can offer distance, um, one of their main, uh, uh, concerns with all the trails everywhere they go is they're short, so they have to do it, they have to follow the loop multiple times in order to get any distance, here our shortest trail is four miles, so, and we're gonna be putting smaller trails in, we just don't know exactly where those are going to head. Um, but when you talk about the economics of outdoor recreation, and I saw this, it's on page four of your, about five of your old hand up, when I saw this, this is the most recent report, outdoor recreation contributes almost a trillion dollars to the economy, more than pharmaceuticals, motor vehicles, housing, utilities, gasoline, and fueling education, and I think that beats it itself here. Um, if you look at the numbers for Wallo drove Canyon, they, they had over five hundred thousand visitors in two thousand fourteen, that was the most recent statistic I've ever found, and they grossed just over two million dollars, and a lot of that revenue comes in from state tax, local tax, um, so it's, outdoor recreation is beneficial for the economy, and we're talking about, we're doing all this great renovation of downtown, if you ask, uh, the hotels here, they'll tell you, yeah, let's build some trails, let's keep people here longer, especially if they want, you know, so instead of people coming in from Colorado to go to Austin, or Albuquerque to go to Dallas, or, or Oklahoma, we're, we have another opportunity to, to keep people here longer and spend more money locally, and that's part of BLM's objectives to, uh, stimulate local economy. Uh, just some more numbers, just to illustrate how much money is spent on specifically camping and trail hiking, uh, we're talking billions of dollars here, and I took out the, uh, direct, the superintendent and her staff and the regional director from Texas Park Mall, that is Wallo drove Canyon, they came out to the crossbar, uh, they're very supportive of it, uh, because they need to leave, and, uh, you know, it's an opportunity we have up here to, to ask for not only a support letter, because the BLM, we're not, contrary to what you hear on the news, we seek county and states' support before we make any decisions, we go through public process, um, working on a grant now, the BLM wants to see that, the county wants this, before we start investing a lot of money in it, and further down the road, once we design the access road and do all the trails, we'll be coming back to see if there's a way for Potter County to help us with that, but as of now, uh, we're seeking a letter of support, general letter of support, standing letter, that I could use for grants, middles, and to submit to the BLM.
I have a couple of questions that I can answer as far, so, I haven't heard anything negative in the news, and now I'm interested to know what's out there that we need to know.
There's, uh, when you talk about the crossbar, there's nothing negative about that, um, when I have my public meetings, I mean, we average between a hundred and few hundred people, which are left, and these are all advocates, our last meeting was for public actions, um, I was anticipating also the meetings coming in and, and complaining about what we're doing, because our road is going to be going through one of the most hottest-headed spots known as Widowmaker, um, out there on this private property, and although it's on private land, you, it's still a public action, so we have to address it through our NIMA, uh, process, um, but we've got basically every outdoor nonprofit group in, in the entire panhandle, and down south in Austin, supporting this mission, uh, people wanting outdoor recreation, either side of the political aisle, Iran, and I've seen it in DC, I've seen it in other states, recreation is coming, outdoor recreation is always coming.
And what are your funding sources, you talked about a few grants, but I'm imagining, um, the capital dollars that you need to get something like this off the ground, other than a grant here or there, um, what are you, what would it cost to develop it, and what are those funding mechanisms that you're going after?
So we're going, currently I'm seeing, uh, National Forest Service grant fund, uh, they have a, a department specific for developing outdoor recreation opportunities in urban areas, fifteen miles is considered. The cost for the, the, the main cost is gonna be the, uh, the construction's not gonna be easy, it's gonna be two months long, um, but if I told you a number, I'd be lying to you, because I have no idea, I'm not to the point yet to actually hire a contractor to become the designer, however, the FHA, the Federal Highway Administration is, is planning on coming out, this is why I need this letter of support, um, to design the road for us, there's money that the FHA has through federal input taxes and, uh, federal grants, where they could spend money on projects like this, so, I'm hoping that the cost is minimal for the BLM and minimal for the local.
So you could potentially be coming back to the county and saying, I need a match of some kind, I grow.
Yes, ma'am, that's the, that's the.
But, uh, do you have, uh, problems with the landowners, landowners in this area?
I haven't, in county, we've got very good relationships with dollars surrounding landowners, one gave us easements to build a room, um, our neighbors to the south and the, and the west, we get along great, um, they all, like I said, you could be on either side of the political aisle, everybody understands, especially ranchers, they like being outside, they understand the need for outdoor recreation, so we, it's been great relationship so far.
Who's your most excellent assistant?
This is Trevor McVeigh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce him, he's our intern, he's graduating with his masters in, in August, I know he doesn't love old enough to. But, uh, hopefully he doesn't, hopefully we can find him a spot here, or, um, somewhere else to be on.
And then Adrian, as this progresses, some of the things that come to my mind, and Sheriff, I'll, um, I'll look to you and your department, but I think of things that happen at the river, I think of, um, you know, people drinking, I think of, um, potential, you know, what, fire pits, you know, I think of all those things in areas like this, I'm assuming you would work with our sheriffs, I mean, I have a sheriff, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but you staff up, right, for that area when people are out at the river,
Yeah.
So if this grows, I mean, obviously, David, you could be part of the conversation.
We work closely with Sheriff Thomas now, um, we, uh, obviously, the more people, the more law enforcement you're gonna need, I can, I anticipate hiring at least one ranger to come out and step in full time. The potential for this area is, is astronomical, we, Potter County doesn't have some of the common face, we got this problem going on, um, if, if Wallo drove Canyon gets five hundred thousand visitors a year, Lake Meredith gets a million, we could easily get two hundred fifty thousand, and that'd be a lot of, of residents.
My, uh, people in the vicinity. Yeah, one of the things I think we all don't understand, and, uh, is that this is the only federally owned piece of property in Oklahoma, Kansas, and so, there's not a lot of opportunities in our region for any kind of development like this except for right here, and, uh, I think it's a, I think it's a real opportunity for, for the county, for Amarillo, and, um, what they're asking for, and I put together this letter that we decide that we, we choose to do so, but I think the cost to us is. But I think the cost to us is gonna be minimal, because I think there's gonna be lots of, uh, lots of monies available because of the uniqueness of where this is and, and what it can add to our, our areas. Anyway, um, to add to this, I, I might also say what we're concerned about. Drinking and stuff like that. I think this should be a little different clientele. It's gonna be, when you have the motor races and stuff like that. Because this should be families, this should be, uh, people who are, you know, respect the environment, who'll take care.
So basically the same clientele that Paul Duro Canyon sees. It will host events like Paul Duro does, like the time robbers at the canyon. I'd like to see a, a tough murder competition out there, um, in our, on our perennial stream, West Ham Creek. You know, there's possibilities for it.
You went out there.
Yes, and I can say it's as beautiful, if not more so, than Paul Duro Canyon. It's really neat pictures, but it doesn't do it justice.
Yeah, it's hard to, I don't know how to look at it. But if anybody wants to come out and see it, I'm more than happy to give them.
I would move that we, uh, send this letter of support, uh, for the, um, BLM Crossbar Management here.
Sir.
I have a motion in the second. I'll, maybe raise your hand.
Thank you.
How do you, uh, Adrian, do you just wanna take this letter with you, or how do you wanna do that?
Whenever, whenever you're ready.
We can get it to you though.
Yes, you want.
Okay, number thirteen, Powder County vacancy on tiers of a one board to discuss the opening of Powder County Member Union. Resignation of a board on the tiers one board and determine how we want to appoint a new member.
Okay, um, we have an opening on the, uh, tiers one board, uh, due to the resignation of a board from our employment and move out of the area. And, uh, I want to, uh, just have us as a court discuss how we wanna fill that. In the past, we each brought recommendations and then selected from that. So is that how we wanna do it this time?
How was, uh, how was the process of Nick being appointed to the board? You know, was that something out of a particular department?
They were brought to the commission to work there. So we all made a recommendation.
Yeah, there were several names brought forward at that time. You know, it's, he was selected.
I believe Helm and Judge Jones, correct? So we need to everyone bring a name next time and, or a couple of names or whatever and go, go that way, or how can we do this?
I think that's the fair way to do it.
Okay. So you wanna make a motion or not, or just discuss and end the discussion?
Do we have to make a motion? I don't think you need to make a motion.
All right, so next time, well, just if anybody wants to be, I think I'm the only one that had to get on this real quick. I'm the boss. And there's like this, I don't know, there's no reason for it, time thing. Okay, let's just bring that back. Okay? All right, and fourteen employment items, I want you all to do at the same time.
I have a question. Tell me, or we take action. Whoever you'd like to do.
Just the listing all at the same time. Employment items to consider next on the following. A, information technology discrimination. Jason Patrick is the IT Director, victim May eight. Road and Bridge, the hiring of Josh Lowe, who's maintenance tech, is replacement for Oscar Reeves, victim May eight. Sophie's brightness, resignation of Nathan Ward, is mechanic technician two, victim May nineteen. End elections, the changes status from full-time employee to part-time employee of Denton Court Monica Amador, due to the election being on, victim May fifteen. Do you have any questions?
I do, and this may be a question for Kay. Um, specifically on the IT Director position, A. One of the things I look at in particular are the balances on vacation and sick days. And so this is often what gets us, which is how this comp policy came into effect. How do we, um, and sometimes this happens in our smaller departments, is where I have seen it. How do we validate that indeed those are the hours? Um, I mean, I know the time clock is a part of that process, but that's been a four-year project. We're not at the end. For direction, direction of, uh, when we have this type of turnover, what is our process to validate, I have a hundred and sixty hours in vacation and I have three hundred hours in sick days?
Now, the sick days are non-compensable hours. So, so they are, uh, moot. The vacation hours, in this particular case, IT has been on time clock.
Okay.
Um, for, uh, I believe the entire year. And so those hours are, um, validated through the time clock system. And we make sure that the hours that are on the timekeeping system, uh, match, uh, the hours that come from the department.
Okay.
Um, and we do have, uh, most folks on currently. We lack only, uh, the sheriff's office, and we're working on codes now.
Okay.
For that.
So Kay, is every department that answers to the commissioner's court on time clock currently?
Um, yes, I believe the only ones that are, are not are elected officials. And, and sheriff's office, I like to say, we are working on codes now.
Okay, so we'll be getting an update on the time clock plus, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Okay.
Remove, we approve the employment add in session.
Motion in, second. I'll raise your hand.
Yeah, Judge, I'll just add as a matter of record, Austin Boyle has submitted his notice at the extension office, um, for another position locally. So we will be seeing that, um, as an action item as well. I have an email out to Brandon Duke's, um, to check on that hiring process. Yes, that's what I've heard. I've heard that we may not have a position till August, uh, but I don't wanna speak for him. That's just what I hear.
Okay, might you have any, anything on projects?
Fifteen, five, ten projects.
Okay. The, uh, county courthouse bill or warrant claims, uh, that, that was here from contract control bill. That was, uh, Chris Austin. Uh, this is a warrant to claims that I brought back to you in twenty twelve. They're still outstanding, if you're aware. Uh, I received an email from, uh, Brent Reeves with Restor Austin. He was gonna come back and complete the work up on the Judge Fowler's area. They come back, they put it in, and I rejected it all. It was unacceptable. And also they have part of Judge Jones's bench within their possession. We're at a point right now, I feel that we're being held hostage. I really could care less to have it back in the building. I just need to know what to do. Ted, uh, you can kinda direct him what to do. I just, I'd rather move on and, yeah, it's all suitable against him. Later, we, we just gotta get this work finished. They will not worry about the schedules that we've established with them. They kinda come in, hey, we're here, we're gonna do the work. You're not happy with that, basically.
Who would you propose do the work on?
Uh, we've got contractors out there. We started going through, getting a proposal, and we hoped ahead and watch it when you had your government date and you're not gonna shut it down. Because at that time, we got a response back from Restor Austin. They were willing to come in and do the work. All of a sudden, have them again. It's just been, I've been down, I've been down. Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even allow them back in the building. That's just my recommendation. Let me move on.
What is the, what does he think the total cost of?
I think, actually, I presented it in twenty twelve. I think it was around forty thousand. It was regretful. We hadn't completely rebuilt all of the building. Uh, that cost had come down since we found some different ways we could do it right now. So the cost would definitely come down. Go ahead and get the work done and build, build the competition.
What's the percentage of, of the completion?
Probably twenty percent, but twenty percent are rejected. I did not accept it.
So we're gonna, uh, look at that revision now in time, too?
They completed these wing sections, uh. She just brought one. Wonderful. These are, these are the only two. This needs, needs some direction from the commission, so we're trying to get this. It's not fair to these two. And would you, too? She's got the biggest majority of the work.
Considering we're back in, you know, I would recommend, uh, the, uh, the, the recommendation about suing the director and terminate the current, uh, contracting place and pursue another contract.
We, we determined the contract.
We determined, I, we have a signed contract, correct? That we've signed with Restor Austin.
Right. And the, the, what, see, the demand, the demand of immediate return of the properties they have, that's ours. And then price to accommodate work that they should be doing. And then have a figure on which to file. For the case, I think the court wants to do that. Maybe we'll have that figured before we let somebody in.
I, I started it, uh, put it on the paper. Started again, reuse the cost.
Doesn't have to be exact.
So you're recommending like not to let those people back in the building?
I mean, they're just coming in and these judges right here, they have to show up all of a sudden. I just say, we'll stop it right now. Uh, don't even allow them back in the building. They, I gave them an email notice Friday that I request all property be returned to Powder County later tomorrow. I still, I wanna see if that happens. If it doesn't, then they have our property. So we can go from there to any type of session of county property. And in the meantime, I'll move through and work with contractors and try to get you a cost of this property.
Ted, how would that affect the lawsuit? How would that affect the lawsuit if we say, you know, you're not coming back?
We're fine, we're mad. They've essentially repeated it.
So we give them many opportunities to show up. We established the schedule, and Brent Reeves is, he's signed the law, you put open house at home to Resto Austin. And basically Brent has stated to me that he's at the person's other home. Whenever he says he can come here and work, they have jobs to make them money. This is warranty claims, so they're not coming back.
So considering what we, what we tend, we'd like to do, Ted, and, uh, not to get the, uh, court full voice, uh, for the two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Well, I think I'll follow the motions. I've seen it to Mr. Reeves, who demanded we get return of the property that belongs to us. And those are, we're going out towards, in the one, and we expect payback over that. I don't really receive any.
So Ted, can you help us, um, uh, discern how that motion needs to be stated to protect us on the contract? As well as taking action that might surprise you? Because this year, we have some more people.
Well, I think at this point, this organization, I could go out and go us. It'll be less difficult to, to give, to open, to get work done. So that, at that point, I'll have a figure.
So we need to effectively do a thing to end the current, uh, contract that we're in right now?
In fact, I don't think we need a motion today. I think I could go out and get some.
Will you respond to the email that I sent for?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send, uh, right to six.
So I would send, I.
Everything else?
Yes, uh, courthouse flow. The January ninth, what? After Nick had left, uh, went back and faced with these departments. Uh, this was a surprise, but it's not completed. I've given all contractors until this party, if the project finished. Ted Herman, he's been out for a long time. I just went up there and looked at it this morning. Just got to look, see what happens from there. The sheriff's department project, uh, just to make the commission report where what's happened within my department. Uh, me losing next month in the world. Got another getting as we start moving first, but I've had two other getting resigned, basically as of last week and this week. That's time. As of last week, I was only able to spend three hours under a project. Just making you aware, and that's not good for Powder County. I need you out there every day. If it gets to the point, uh, one of the most recent positions that we have, that's, uh, turned into resignation, that's, uh, may come to you, may I bring somebody into the system to keep your board around?
All right, number sixteen, jail report. We have five hundred and eight people in our jail today. Seventy-five girls were females. The ratio was seven, uh, percent of females, fourteen percent of women. Uh, we need insurance audits.
Yeah.
We got it for next time. We're ready for next time. We have a couple of people in the office, these are a little stupid. A lot of country Republicans, these ones are running over us.
Hello, I'm Kay, I'm Katie. How can I meet you guys? I live out in Valdiora, on Horseshoe Road. And we have, have wells. I guess the oil company in Boston, we're next to us. We're about, I don't know how this works or how they gotta permit. But we have limited water out there, great limited water. We have springs. We're talking about conservation of wildlife. Six years ago, when the spring has just dried up, we have really, really limited water. And that Sunday, they've been re-wells instead of building new water. It's full time, twenty-four hours, and just, possibly we're getting a pond. They've been listening about three weeks time, they're bought the property. You really can't see, unless you live on the road itself, you can't see what they're doing. And I've done some research, I've had a specialist, frankly, and I really can't afford to hire a attorney to fight this. I don't feel like I should have to. I don't understand how they got these permits, or who they went through, as far as the county. But, I mean, I'm, I'm really concerned, this is our livelihood. He's been there about twenty-five years, and he's been really upset. He's a visitor freedom veteran, Iraqi freedom veteran. He's retired now, and he feels like we're having to fight and work to defend our livelihood. We have a small ranch, we have Catholic kids. And if we lose our water, how are we going to survive? And I've got plenty of neighbors out there who are too. And I don't understand how they can come out and just drill these three wells with no notification. None of my neighbors knew about this. I mean, this is kind of all a surprise for us, because we haven't had a chance to get organized. And when my neighbors come down where the roads come and talk to, but I don't know what we can do. We need some help, because I'm, I'm concerned.
Do you know that this company?
No, I actually went there to talk to these people. April twenty-fifth is when we saw they were buying this property. April twenty-sixth, we saw they were drilling wells, so facets happened. April twenty-eighth, I realized it was a dam. I went to talk to, there was two, there was a couple gentlemen there. If you go to talk to them, they're not very friendly. Um, and what I understand, they wouldn't give you a business card. They just kept saying, we have permits, we have permits. And I said, can I have a name? They would not give me a name. They're putting a fence up there now. They have three, three wells. They're non-stop, it's over about three to four VD, it's at least forty acres. It's just a huge earth and dam. They've been putting this white film on the bottom to conserve water. I'm not even sure if it's going to be fracking water, because they're, they didn't tell us anything. So I, I need some help, I need some direction, what I can do. I'd just like some information.
They wouldn't get their permit from us.
But do they not have to know about the neighbors? Because nobody, nobody knows. But don't they have to at least come to the talk room? To do some research on how it's gonna affect the people? I asked them, if our well's dry up, who's going to pay for it? And they said, we don't recommend them do that, we have permits. So I just like some help or some direction, or some protection. So what do you think?
Well, it, uh, the county does not permit that sort of thing. Where do we go from, where do we go from this point?
I think the agencies would be Texas Railroad Commission, the, the additional, the Department of Attorney.
So could we help her through that process? If we can't direct her at the board, I don't know if Scott or Ted does.
I have no, no, which, which.
Kathleen and King?
Kathleen and King.
Kathleen King.
Sheriff, is there some way maybe you can get some direction out there and find out who the company is? Get maybe, check the permits anyway, see if they got, actually got permits.
I wonder what legal. Scott, I don't think that we have the legal right to go and ask for the permits.
No, it's, the ones who would have the ability to enter and check permits would be the permitting authority, probably the railroad commission. Possibly the commission on environmental quality. So it'd be the state. I mean, they have their own fault.
There's no protection and just take the water and then, then it's out.
You want to get Ted, get some information, we don't have some numbers or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Judge, could we have an item for court in two weeks just so we have an update on this? Um, and we can stay at least to be informed as we know how this progresses. Is there anything else? Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Tony Guerrero, also live in Val d'Or. And I've talked to Commissioner Church a couple of times, the last two or three months. Regarding the speed limit in the valley, there's numerous senior citizens that are seriously concerned about the speed limit, period. There's a lot of curves in that community. There's a lot of senior citizens coming and going to the community at all times. And the speed limit, as far as I know, is 75 miles an hour. There's been continuous accidents, not only from the residents in the area, but as well as traffic going through. As I probably could have background checked on the accidents in that area. And they get more and more accidents as time goes by. The speed limit needs to be reduced in that area as far as all the residents in that area is concerned. I think this has been tried a couple of times a while back when another commissioner was in charge of that area, by the precinct commissioner. And there was no success in doing, reducing the speed. And we really did need to do something about it. I don't know where to go, we don't know where to go.
Is there something we can do, Sebastian, or?
We're talking about 1061?
Yes, 1061.
The state text.
But would it be worth, a lot of, certainly if it's text, Scott's wrote it, I don't want to, this isn't an action item, so keep me in line, Scott and Ted. But a lot of times I've seen from the local government, hence the county, if we're able to show a letter of support to at least look at it, what they'll do is they'll do site surveys where they look at the road conditions. Uh, and especially as population grows around that area. If that's still the right speed limit, my guess would be it was so high because there were so few people out there so long ago. That's not the case I'm hearing now. I don't know who can research that process for us. But I've seen local governments do a letter of support, at least to text out to say, hey, someone look at this and get another site survey done. And I may not be calling it directly exactly.
And I, I would make that work. I did it for the Highland Park area, they know that's big.
Yes, Mr. Church is.
I'm talking to text on that as well.
Yes, sir. I'm hoping we get some positive results.
But I would like to have you talk to him because I get no results. But I have talked to him many times. The only time I get any results is if a poor price gets involved. And I've talked to you, I think you've talked to him several times.
I'm also, yes, ma'am, thank you. And I'm also concerned about the water supply as well. I mean, we have a well that we irrigate, I mean, that we supply our livestock with. And it's been reduced in the last four days, it's gotten, we had a stream of water coming out about four foot out of the well from the pipe. Now it's reduced to about a foot and a half. That's a drastic reduction in water supply at one of our locations where cattle is, in need of water. That's a pretty drastic reduction in water. I don't know if it's, it's concerning the, the out, outcome of the water being taken out of the ground? Or if it's just natural cost of water? If we've had a lot of water the last seven or eight years, all of a sudden, within that four days, it's been reduced drastically. So I don't want to blame this company, but at the same time, it's kind of like too coincidental.
Okay, thank you, sir. After the meeting, I need to get your phone number. Is there anything else? If nothing else, we're done.
Just for the, for the agenda, we need to put that tiers one board member.
Yeah.
A discussion in.
Okay, we are adjourned.